It's meeting order to order, it's at six thirty. Reminder to everyone here that this is being digitally recorded, so please be respectful of each other when you're speaking, as well as when you're listening to others. So, anyone here for open session? Okay. Katie, we'll go to you for communication.
All right, we got some good stuff coming up. A couple of things this weekend, we have the ice fishing derby from the Rod and Gun. Registration fee is twenty dollars, and then it's ten dollars for kids under the, twelve and under. You can register at the Rod and Gun, but the actual ice fishing derby will be this Saturday, seven to two, at, depending on what you call it, Bent slash Sawyer's Pond over by Rieta Ranch. They also, they'll have like food, and then they have raffles after and stuff. They said bring cash, because it's a cash thing. And they only have one ATM, and it might get a little bogged down. So that's this Saturday, you can register still to get into that ice fishing derby. And then also, this Saturday, Heather, there is a story time.
I know, yeah, I was gonna say that, but you beat me to it, eleven o'clock.
No, ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, oh, well, I'm, you know, I'd be an upgrade.
Don't worry, I'll keep it straight.
Would've missed it.
I know, you would've missed it.
Could've been so devastating.
So this Saturday, ten o'clock at the library, there is a story time for all of the little peoples that just can't live without, you know, a good old story. Ms. Patricia will be reading something fun, I'm sure, up at the library. And then there is also on March first, the following Friday, there is a meat raffle at the Rod and Gun for the Hubbardston Lions. It starts at seven o'clock, doors open at six thirty, correct, Chris?
Yep.
Okay, six thirty. So it'll be up at the Rod and Gun, March first. There is Quavon's Q Drug is having their second annual purple for prevention contest. It's basically a light decorating or a purple decorating contest. My daughter actually did it last year, and she had fun. So if you have lights, it should be lit up, because it's at night, so they kind of encourage lights. Lights should be on from five to eight. The contest itself runs March first through the eighth. There is business entry, and then there's also regular resident entry. Registrations are due by February twenty eighth, which is next Wednesday. There is a Google form under Q Drug, and you can find that either on the Quavon website or on their Facebook page. But it's a Q contest, there's like fifty dollar gift card prizes for like first and second on different levels, and then for businesses, there's like you get an ad in the paper or something like that. But it's good stuff, and it's, again, purple for, uh, purple for prevention. So you're gonna see a lot of purple stuff. March fifth, presidential primary, just in case you haven't noticed, there's some people running for president. The primary will be at seven AM to eight PM in Hubbardston Center School on March fifth. Then the Friends of the Senior Center are having a St. Patty's Day luncheon on March sixteenth. This is open to all from twelve to two. It's seven dollars per person, they'll be having sandwiches, a baked potato bar, and desserts. And again, the money goes back to the Friends of the Senior Center. There's also going to be a lottery ticket raffle. They're hoping to have a good turnout, because they just kind of donated a lot of their coffers to the DEP project, so kind of spread that around, because they need to build up their funds. But again, all that money goes back to the Senior Center when the Senior Center needs it. So it's, it's all for a good cause. And then there is a Hubbardston Community Theater SpongeBob Musical coming up, March fifteenth, which is a Friday, is their first show. And they have two on Saturday, and then they have, I believe, one on Sunday, the seventeenth. It's fifteen dollars for adults. The tickets for kids under the age of twelve and the seniors are ten dollars, and that is at the Hubbardston Center School. This is their one yearly big production that they do. Tickets will be on sale, I believe, March second. But again, the SpongeBob Musical is coming, and again, March fifteenth through the seventeenth, Hubbardston Community Theater.
Do they do tickets at the door too, on that case?
Yes, but it's cash only, they don't do Venmo at the door, because I think it's crappy cell reception, so.
And if someone wants to buy them in advance, how do they do that?
They can go to the website, or they have a Venmo. It's on the, they have a Facebook page and stuff, the information's on there.
Community theater website, or the school's website?
Hubbardston Community Theater, no, Hubbardston Community Theater, it's totally separate than the school. They just have it at the school, because there's not a lot of options in town. All right, so we also have scholarships are coming up due for April, for mostly, not all of them, but I know that the, the Cut Your Hen one is coming up in April, and so isn't the Hubbardston Scholarship Committee has three. So if you are going to college next year, I suggest you look around. The Lions usually have one, the library usually has one, there's a few other places in town, so start poking around. They're open, some are open to all, some are open just to high school students, but again, poke around. They're, they're coming up due real quick. Keep Hubbardston Beautiful Day is going to be April twentieth from eight to noon at the Hubbardston Rec Field. The Girl Scouts will again be doing the bottle and can drive. The Boy Scouts are changing it up this year. They're gonna be doing a metal recycling drop off, and it's going, they're, they're looking, the, the electronic thing has become difficult to do in this area. The, the companies are being very difficult, and it was just not feasible. So we swapped over to the metal recycling, and they're looking for a dollar donation for like a, you know, you come with like one dry, or just a dollar, and we throw it in the thing. And then if you come with a truckload, ten bucks, you know, for the truckload. So, and it all goes back to the Boy Scouts, so it's good. The Girl Scouts is bottle and cans, you just drive by and chuck out, there's no judgment if we don't judge. Bring the whole truckload of beer cans, we don't judge, we don't care. We sort it all, we don't care. So anyway, judgment free zone. But yeah, so again, that is April twentieth, and I'll have a dumpster there, so you can go around and pick up trash in the neighborhoods and bring it on down and throw it in. And then, of course, the Hubbardston Fair, just keep this date in mind, is June eighth, nine to two, at the Rec Field. I know, it's coming up already.
Talking June.
I know, shh, with a rain date of the ninth. All right, that's all we got, which is enough.
Any questions, any? Thank you, Katie. All right, then we will move on to the first item of consideration, which is the election slash appointment, if you will, of the Quavon Regional School District, District School Committee member. And I'm pleased and appreciative that we have our three school committee members with us, as well as the candidates, we appreciate you all coming in. One thing I'd like to make perfectly clear to the candidates, in case there are any particular questions that, the way this works, this is an appointment to complete a term that ends in June. So I mean, it's, it's relatively speaking short, at which point you certainly would be encouraged, so if you were so interested to run for the position, you would certainly be able to do that. But just, that you're clear that this is an appointment that ends with, in June, okay? I'd like to ask the school committee people to join us at the table, and and what I'm gonna ask is if each of you, if you so desire, would like to tell us a little bit about yourselves, and your interest, and what gets you interested in volunteering, if you will, for that appointment, if you, if you so desire. But this is, for those of you, this is Alicia Muck, and Joe.
Joe Fonz.
Alfonso. Okay.
Um, oh, it's too dumb, so don't actually. Hi, Alicia Muck, I've lived in Hubbardston for, God, it's like ten something years now. I have two daughters in the Quavon School District. One is right here in elementary school, and one just moved up into the sixth grade in the middle school. So, and something I've been involved in tons of in the past, I've been on the Main Street Committee, back when we were doing that, as well as I was in Girl Scouts with my older daughter's troop for many years as well. So I'm invested in the town, as well as interested in my, my background as well. I work as an instructional designer in the corporate world, so really creating education for adults, which still has a basis in, in the children as well. My oldest daughter as well, a little personal information too, is she does have dyslexia, so special interest in, you know, advocating for those with the special education as well is a very inherent here to my heart as well, so.
Thank you. After which, Joe, and then take any questions, anybody?
Yeah, so I apologize, I wasn't aware I needed to be here tonight until my mother called me.
That's okay.
So, who won't, who won't call me? So I live forty-nine Hill Road, I grew up in town, went to Quavon, went through Quavon, moved back about three years ago. Two boys, they're in the school district, I'm the vice president of the Hubbardston Rod and Gun. I'm a trustee over at the Nimrod League of Holden. I've been the president of the Worcester County League of Sportsman's Clubs. Done a lot for the community, when it comes to the kids, when it comes to doing different projects and initiatives around the county. Just here to try to help the town, so if there's something needed, happy to step up and help. That's it.
Thank you.
Joe, do you have a few minutes to hang around?
Would you like to stick around for some?
Or do you need to run?
I don't, I have a meeting to be at, that's why, nobody, nobody told me so.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because now I would open it up to anybody on the school committee, if you have anything you'd like to say or any questions you want to ask, and the board also.
I think the question I had was, Joe didn't have the form, but his resume had an address in Holden, so he clarified he is a resident, so I wanted to make sure of that.
For the good of the order, we did email Joe at least two, if not three times. It was not a phone call, we didn't make a phone call to Alicia either.
I believe, yeah, yeah. It could've gone into somebody's spam, so. Yeah.
I think we've had the same issue in past experiences.
Anyone on the board have any questions, or?
Well, I would've loved to ask questions of both of them, but they're both not here, so I don't think it's fair to ask a question.
Yeah.
Maybe I could ask.
Go ahead, Debbie.
How's your availability? I don't know if you know about us on the school committee, but we typically meet on, our regular meetings are the second Thursday of every month. And then we have several subcommittees that many of us are on, usually multiple, so those meet at different various times throughout the year as well.
Yeah, I would say I really do have availability on most evenings, so it is, you know, me and my husband and the kids, so if I have to be somewhere, you know, he can take them, so it's not, it's not an issue at all.
Not a big issue, great.
I know it's hard.
So sorry, are you, is your hope to rerun in June for the next election cycle as well?
Yeah, I would be interested in, in doing that as well.
Okay.
It does take, I've been on for ten years, and wouldn't you agree, Mark, we're still learning.
Yeah, it's, uh.
Mark's also a senior, so it takes.
State is constantly changing things, you know, coming up with new initiatives for the school districts, funded and unfunded, and whatever, so it's, you know, it's, it's a real challenge. And, and, you know, in town, folks are concerned about, you know, budget issues, both the town budget issues and the school budget issues, school takes a large chunk of that, and, you know, you will be getting questions, if you're, if you're elected or appointed, you'll be getting questions from probably other big one town asking you, you know, you know, what's going on. How's your experience been with the squad?
I would say overall, it's been a positive experience. Obviously with a child in special education, there is certain challenges that are experienced as well with that.
My daughter has dyslexia as well, and that's why I got involved many years ago.
Yeah, so it's definitely, you know, I think there's, there's never an easy road in anything with education, like you said, between budget concerns as well. I know the state and federal kind of, you know, cut or add funding, and the school has to make it up somehow, so that's always a big challenge as well. I mean, working in the corporate world, I am used to people coming to me with questions, concerns, and needing to handle and address them, and not take those things personally as well, and just keeping that professional outlook on things.
Anyone on the board?
I just wanna just reiterate the budget thing, we're in a bad way in Hubbardston right now. I don't know if you know that, but, and everybody's pocketbook is hurting right now. I mean, everybody's taxes just went up, and the electricity's going up again, I just read that today, and house insurance, car insurance, so everywhere we can squeak. I know there's only four years on, on the committee, and you're doing your best, but we're in a bad way right now in this town. And, I mean, we're gonna have to make cuts at some point, if it keeps going the way it's going. I'm talking public safety, so if your kids aren't safe to get to school, you know what I mean? Fire everything, so budget's huge right now, and some of the pre-numbers I see is scary, but I know we can work through that a little bit, but I know everybody has to pay their bills and everything else, so. When the budget, the school budget takes up, what is it, sixty-two percent of the town budget? Sixty-two percent of our income in tax money, that's a big hit. Leave a town, a town to run on, very little money, so. Our total budget's what, ten point two million?
Likely to be over eleven this year.
Okay, eleven million, and so.
Ten eight, and that's what I'm looking for.
And so the town gets four million to do everything it needs to do, so. But every town is like that, and as you know that, so I don't think the next coming few years are gonna get any better. So, just word to the wise, I guess. I mean, I preach it all the time, this, I'm a big budget guy, we don't have the money, everything's going up. I'm fixed income, like a lot of people have fixed income. I'm making a lot less now than I was a year ago with my income, so, that's all.
Yeah, I think most people in Hubbardston are, we felt in our own pockets, so.
Oh, yeah, it's, you gotta dig deep.
The same with lots.
Yeah, but you can only do what you can do, you're only four out of twenty?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Now we added, we added twenty.
Well, I was gonna say, I don't wanna get off topic, but part of the challenge for Hubbardston this budget year is that the houses are assessed at a very high rate, which ups our contribution, as well as, I think all of the other towns had declining enrollment, except Hubbardston had twenty more children. So, we have to pay per, per student.
The twenty children or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not the issue, and we don't need to get into it here this evening. The issue is the six to ten percent increase on a twenty-one million dollar budget. There is no issue paying the, for twenty children to go to school. I hear often that they're at your meetings, it comes up, oh, they don't gripe about Monty Tech. We do gripe about Monty Tech, there are a lot less children that go to Monty Tech. So the problem here is not the twenty additional students, there's tax revenue for that, and it, it, it all comes out in the wash. The problem is the year after year after year increases of above five, six, seven percent.
So, Mr. Chairman, if there's no more questions.
If no one else, I have something I wanted to say, but, no. For you. First of all, to give due respect to the three members, because we are, when we're full, we are four out of fifteen. And as a town, we stand alone many times, I've been on the board eleven years now, and being a school committee member, not personally, but I'm a retired teacher, we're all very pro education. Those of us who've had kids go through the system, we're no different than anyone else, we all, everybody wants the best for their kids. But if I can use, go along with that analogy too, when I was a kid growing up, and my, with my own kids, they can't always have everything they want. The point I'm trying to make is, as a school committee member, you're wearing two caps. Your parents, you're reflecting what you want for your child, but you have to be our voice too. And we are in, as Peter was saying, and we are not exaggerating. I've been on the board for eleven years, and it's frustrating, because my experience with the, the school committee in total at Quavon seems to be that their philosophy, whether it is their philosophy or not, it, it appears that way to me, that every year they have to, they feel as though they have to go three to six percent higher than they went the year before. Well, Hubbardston is not going three to six percent richer than we did the year before. And it bothers me that I don't, and this is not reflecting on you, because I do know that you are speaking up. And I appreciate that, because I think you need to do that. But it's not easy to, to wear those two caps, because we understand both, but we need your voice that, that way, just because we're in a situation, something's gonna break. Because we try, we're trying to avoid, and so far, we have, making cuts. But this pattern, as far as I'm concerned, every single year, is going higher and higher. I don't know where their mindset is that says, well, you guys certainly can, can afford it again. No, we can't, so that it's, it's a tough situation. Even though it's a temporary appointment, and you indicate that you might wanna run again, which I appreciate more than you can imagine, but I would like you to know, our position as a board, we need you also, all of you, we need you to continue to be our voice, because our voice, we're trying to speak for the town. And our job is to keep the town afloat, as well as take care of the kids. And it shouldn't, so, and I'll set on that, but, do you have any questions for us before I recognize Heather?
Um, I don't think so.
Okay, you were going to say that, Heather.
Mr. Chairman, I was gonna ask you if you'd be willing to accept a motion at this time.
Yes, I would, sure.
I'd like to make a motion that.
Actually, it's, it's a vote.
Yeah, it's a vote.
It's a vote, and you will be included in the vote, that you'll be able to, so. Do you wanna put it in the form of calling the vote, we can do that.
Your motion could be to move the vote.
To move the vote, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to move the vote.
Okay, motion is made, is there?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, any questions? Okay, are you comfortable sitting here, or would you rather?
I'm comfortable if you guys are.
Okay, you are here, so let's, we will begin. We have two candidates, and you folks have a vote along with us, okay? So, those in favor of Mrs. Muck, please indicate by raising your hands. Okay. That's, again, I'm sorry, there are six of us.
No, it's not your name.
Oh, seven, I'm sorry.
Mark gets a vote too.
I know, well, I gotta call, and those in favor of Mr. Alfonso. Okay, the vote is seven to one, so the appointment is made to Mrs. Muck. Appreciate that, thank you very much. And continue speaking up for us, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We'll wait, just to.
Town clerk, you'll need to swear her in.
We'll be reaching out to her tomorrow likely. We'll need to just do the conflict of interest training, and then we'll be good to go. We'll let the school know of your election tomorrow or everything.
Just a, just a point, you know, I appreciate all your comments. We are sticking up for all the super hard skills and the concerns, but, but, but the bottom line is, things like fuel, things like transportation went up astronomically over the course of the next year. You know, we, we had an increase in special aid from twenty, roughly twenty-three to twenty-five percent after the pandemic. So, there are a lot of issues that they also have to deal with, but I'm not saying that we can't work on.
Understand, Mark, thank you.
We appreciate it.
Keep fresh. Okay. Moving on, we have a consent agenda, let me go over basically just one thing, that's resignation. Candace Livingston, town clerk, and assessors, and the town clerk assesses clerk, effective after the primaries, March sixth, twenty twenty-four.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion, motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
And second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to hold for, for comment. Do we do an exit interview when somebody resigns?
We will be, yes, we will be doing an exit interview with, with Candace.
Okay, can we review that when we get it? Great, thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. I think six A of the new members will turn it over to Nate, the capital improvement plan presentation.
Is that gonna be on the board behind us?
Yep.
There's nobody on, so.
Well, also give him a handout too.
Yep.
So you need your own owl.
I need an owl.
Oh, look how close you are, look at that.
She's a, we're broadcasting, we're the front of the, the old town court. We'll get to it on the agenda.
You're broadcasting, Peter.
No, no one's broadcasting.
Miss Gladstone, that it, just like, just keep it down there. Up close and personal.
Do our longer court dates, so it can be in the middle.
No, it doesn't need to be in the middle, it needs to be down your end. Keep that thing at your end. Yes, we're picking on your owl.
It's a cute thing.
Yeah, it's adorable, probably, moving on.
All right, we are no longer on the Google Meet. We are, however, still broadcasting live to cable access and YouTube at a later date. So, thank you for having me this evening to speak about the capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan this year is a five-year plan that sees the years of, fiscal years of twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine. As with many years in the past, it is a lot more concrete at the very beginning, because we can make commitments with one-time funds and available resources. I invite any of you to raise your hand or interrupt me at any time if you have a question or would like more information about a specific item. Not looking to make a very formal presentation. Right here, you will see an outline of the capital improvement process going throughout pretty much the entirety of fall and the holiday season. I would like to thank the Capital Improvement Committee for working with me on that. This year, I did implement what I called community capital, and no one submitted any community capital projects. So that is something that we will try again next year. It is a goal of mine within five years to be able to fund something that comes in from a community level, someone that came up with an idea and submitted it to the town. And that, because I think that would be very interesting and rewarding to do, to show that the town is listening, and we do want to work with those at home. Other than that, you can check out the remainder of the calendar, the tributes, the last six months, in the CIP book. What is a capital improvement plan, and what is a capital improvement planning committee? The Capital Improvement Planning Committee is tasked annually with working with the town administrator to develop the five-year capital plan. This year, the capital improvement plan got a little bit wonky with its membership, because a member ended up being away for a majority of the capital plan timeframe. So the members were Charles Reed, Finance Committee Representative, serving as chair, William Murray, a community representative, Peter Russell, the Planning Board Representative, who filled in for Francois Steiger, who was the Planning Board Member that did have something come up in his life that he was not able to make it to a few of the meetings. Thank you to Peter and Chair Monroe for allowing Peter to step in so that we could have a quorum and get this done, because if we would've waited for Francois to return, we would not be presenting on this last meeting or today. The capital improvement plan outlines five-year infrastructure, facilities, vehicles, equipment, and other assets on a needs-based and department-based level through project submission. The plan aims to promote wise use of taxpayer funds. The plan aims to promote wise use of taxpayer funds by transparently coordinating priorities across all departments. A capital project is anything over ten thousand dollars that has a multi-year benefit unlike an operating expense. Think vehicles, infrastructure, facilities, major equipment, those type of things. Why make a capital improvement plan? The capital improvement plan helps create long-term planning for our assets and it makes it easier to finance them, having a plan with what to do with the different monies coming in over the years. It minimizes budget impacts, reduces emergency costs, enables phased investments, and many other positive, positive things. The town has had a capital improvement plan in this formalized fashion since I believe two thousand and nineteen. And prior to that, there were many, many years of a capital improvement planning committee kind of in a less formalized fashion. I know we did kick this off by working with the Collin Center to develop what was, I believe, the twenty, the FY twenty nineteen capital plan. Remember?
I don't.
No? All right, sounds right.
I think we'll go with that.
The town, did you have a question?
May I ask a question? So I rarely see in the capital improvement plan, they cover infrastructure, which includes buildings, correct?
Yes, sir.
And I don't often see um anything, you know, like the issue we're having right now with the boiler, any kind of plan in the CIPC uh that takes um the power plant of each building into consideration or have a expiration date on the equipment in these buildings in their plan. Uh, as a recommendation, I think it'd be a good idea to incorporate that into the CIPC.
Absolutely.
Now that there's a new boiler in the uh library, you know, you you you're at least gonna get twenty to thirty years out of the boiler. You know what I mean? So that's one they can kick down the road for twenty or thirty years.
Been saying that kinda stuff for years.
No, but it's gonna bring a new boiler, so.
No, but that's what I mean. I've been, trust me, I say it to him all the time.
Sure, that's the only thing I wanted to bring up. I I don't usually see anything about power plants or or boilers or anything in here or or.
I'm right there with you.
Okay.
And I hope to be able to evolve this plan over the next few years. Facilities has been a weakness of the town for many moons. So that's not something that's going to be able to be fixed overnight. The school actually was willing this year to take a walk through Hubbardson Center School to talk about some future capital needs. So I look forward to working with them in the future and implementing what ends up being their capital plan into our capital plan and see what we can make work out. But yeah, in a perfect world, I would love to see the town have maybe not a full full time but someone who's a facilities or maintenance professional. Right now, we do have a gentleman that does some of the cleaning. Unfortunately, he can handle a maintenance project here and there. We do have Travis in the DPW to do a project here and there, but they are very, very swamped, very, very busy. So a lot of times, facilities ends up either half taken care of or just kind of put together in a way that isn't perfect. Someday, I hope, three, five years down the line, we can take a real swing at solving many of our major facilities issues with a designated person whose job it is to keep things like boilers and just general facilities maintenance up to date.
Okay, I mean, where where is the inventory of the town's buildings kept?
On my website.
On your website?
On the, well, not my, on the town administrator's webpage.
So maybe in the future, we can go around the buildings and get some um ages of the equipment in the buildings and list those ages beside the inventory of the um of your inventory of the buildings in town just so you have some way to go and look at, oh, this thing is this old, that old, or electrical system, you know. You can usually go by the permit, when the permit was built or pulled on the building, the electrical, so that's all.
Yep, it's.
I'll turn away.
Not something I'm, not something I'm against, that's, I'm very pro that.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Town capital assets, the town owns essential capital assets like the eight buildings housing municipal operations and recreations, property maintaining roofs, HVAC systems and components, preserves functionality and lifespan, information technology, we have computers, servers, and other di- digital infrastructure. A majority of this, I'm glad Peter did mention, is kept track of on the town administrator's webpage. The charter actually outlines that annually the town administrator must update the, let me call it, tracking plan. So I have the IT, vehicles, and facilities all up there. We use that to get our liability insurance quotes each year. Vehicles, we have over forty specialized vehicles, parks and playgrounds, roads and bridges. With with over eighty miles of local roads and twenty town-owned bridges, there is a lot to take care of. Careful planning across all of these items increases the ability to afford things that we desperately need and keep things in good order. The town maintains an infrastructure through a formal twenty eighteen capital planning policy. Within the policy, it defines capital projects as we did earlier, provides a project evaluation criteria. This year, I took the criteria and turned it into a form that each member of the capital improvement committee then filled out based on what the different departments had submitted. The capital financing policy states that we aim to have to maintain two point fi- two, two-five percent of the operating budget towards capital investment while keeping debt service under five percent. Debt service is currently well, well under five percent while the capital fina- capital planning amount is closer to six than five percent of the budget. Funding capital investments, the town utili- utilizes a balanced, multi-pronged funding strategy combining tax levies, free cash reserve, capital stabilization, sale of town assets, debt financing, and many grants and outside funding opportunities to ensure that we can afford what we need without placing whole liability on the taxpayer. Physical targets, maintaining prudent targets provides stability for both operating and capital budgets, including generating an annual free cash amount of five percent of the operating budget, which we do hit. Target six percent of the operating budget towards capital spending, which we do hit. Keep total annual debt service under five percent of general fund revenues, which is something that we are well under and looking into with debt council as to what would be a feasible plan moving forward and for what. We do have some space there to make moves in the future, which is something we will talk about shortly. But large debt purchases require a what do you call them, a debt, not an override, but a.
Exclusion.
A debt exclusion. A debt exclusion so that not always the first thing on our on our mind with things getting as tight as they are and the budget becoming as difficult to balance each year. But I'm preaching to the choir here, we do aim to hit our six percent capital plan for the next, six percent capital plan financing goal for the next few years. This year, six percent would have been two hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-five, which we are right under that. We were slightly over it, but a quote came in five thousand dollars lower than I had anticipated. In twenty twenty-four, we did a number of capital projects based off of last year's capital improvement plan. The town made over five hundred thousand dollars in strategic infrastructure investments to benefit residents. A hundred thousand dollars in additional annual road repair. A hundred thousand dollars in a DPW garage roof placement partnered with fifty thousand dollars received in the state budget two years ago. The main street was rep- main street fire station parking lot was paved with no financing by us. We ended up working with Amarillo and Mast Dot to pave the parking lot on Main Street and the small portion of the lip right in front of the police department, just for safety's sake because we don't want anyone tripping while they are coming and going in an emergency. Uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in for the replacement of ambulance two. That was a partnership between ARPA and the budget. There was a number of prongs to that approach, but we now do have a beautiful new ambulance, a six thousand dollar library planning assessment, which they have and are working on a plan. Their strategic plan is going to be not implemented but reviewed and planned over the next six months. I look forward to working with them on that in the coming years. And a nineteen thousand dollar, nineteen thousand an- dollar annual technology update. This year, that was two laptops and a giant server that will be installed next month over at the police department to run police and senior center operations. The twenty twenty-five capital improvement proposal includes another hundred thousand dollars for ongoing road maintenance, twenty thousand dollars for annual technological upgrades, eighty-seven thousand dollars to replace an aging police cruiser on our every-two-year cycle, nine thousand dollars to to purchase a new DPW mower, ten thousand dollars to organize slash digitize the town clerk's vault, thirteen thousand dollars to upgrade the DPW fuel management system, which we, the software updated, so we need to update the whole plan. It allows us to account much better and more efficiently of all of the fuels that are being used by the different department. Twenty thousand dollars towards future fire department SCBA replacement. That's the breathing packs that they wear into a fire. They expire every couple of years. There is a chance that we will get a grant for these down the road. But I, the chief and I and the capital improvement planning committee figured it would be easier to put away a little bit each year than to take a hundred thousand dollar bite out of our capital plan in three to four years. And.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that reflected in this, the twenty thousand each year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and a twelve thousand dollar Green Communities Grant Match for Clean Energy Upgrades. As I believe I had mentioned publicly here before, the library trustees were going to pay the, I believe, six percent grant match for the Green Communities Competitive Grant received a few weeks ago. However, when it, when the boiler in the library went, they paid for that because I believe twenty-seven thousand dollars. And what I had agreed with them was that I would do my best to aim to get the twelve thousand dollars into the capital plan because it just so happened that the final capital improvement planning committee meeting was the following day. So time usually doesn't work in my favor, but this time it did and I hope that we can move forward with that. These are the strategic investments, the larger-scale grant-funded projects that are on the back of your sheet, which are three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in recurring Chapter Ninety State Roads Funds, the one hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant-funded Green Communities Library Heat Pump Project, a eight hundred thousand dollar fire engine replacement via debt, which is currently, I'm gonna call it yellow uh in, on like on the red, yellow, green light scale because we are uncertain if that's something that would be received positively by the Select Board Finance Committee all the way to town meeting and the election. And that's not something that the chief nor I are really looking to waste a shot at.
Which, I'm sorry, which one you're talking about, the fire truck?
A fire truck.
Okay.
And we can talk about that, even if it's in in the plan with an asterisk next to it. There's a good chance it will not be funded this year because of a debt exclusion and that it is not exactly an appropriate year to be going for that when there are cuts on the table already. Seventy-five thousand dollars in center school replacements, that's the rest of the boiler and the fire panel. A fifty thousand dollar, hopefully, grant for the Curtis Field walking track. As I'm sure you've noticed in the past, a number of the projects on the strategic capital investment opportunities do not come with a exact defined financing strategy. It is, we are trying to apply for grants. We will go for a number of opportunities, these are the things we would like to see done this year. And or, uh, looking ahead over the next five years, five point two million dollars in capital needs, public safety building, hopefully, facilities updates, road reconstructions, equipment and fleet replacements, utilizing one-time cash, state and federal grants, debt issuance, and local reserves. Here you can see in a pie chart broken down the way this year's department breakdown breaks out. It's a large number, thirty-seven point five of the projects are DPW and it breaks down evenly after that. The DPW projects this year are not big-money projects, but they still do have more than one of them. And here is the sheet you have in front of you. I am very much open for questions and appreciate you taking the time to listen. I hope that I talked less than I did last year.
I have a question, Nate.
Yes.
Um, the Volt Organization Management, so how is that different from what we've done with Laserfish?
So this is, I'm going to call this pre-digitalization. It is a company called King Information Systems. They come in, they put up shelves, they put everything in order and then go from there. It's not, we will then be able to put files that are not completely permanent and historical in Laserfish from here, but right now it is a cluster. And I can provide you with the whole breakdown. They gave us a, and a whole folder on what we had in there and what.
Could it be?
Potentially. Just help our organization.
Yeah, it's on your, it's on your thing.
So basically, it's a professional organizing company that comes in and will get it all straightened out?
Yeah.
So it's not the, it's not this one?
Well, it's on the list.
Yeah, it's on this list.
Fifteen.
Nope, that, other side.
Ten, no.
Right here.
Okay, I got you. Haven't you been dealing with this for like three years now?
It's okay.
Isn't it on my list for fifteen thousand?
Thanks.
Yes.
It's on the list for ten, isn't it?
It's on your list for fifteen if you're looking at the full report, but over the last couple of days, we got our actual quote and it came in at ten. Because when I, when I went over there, I whispered ten in her ear.
Great.
Okay, my next question, so the John Deere mower, so it's nine thousand is what we're expecting for that one?
Yes.
So isn't our capital plan, didn't I read that it's ten thousand and above?
It's been on there for three years.
Okay, but do we still think the amount's gonna be nine thousand or is that up from the last couple?
It's likely up from the last couple of years.
Okay, so that's a leading, leads me into the next question. Out of curiosity, when we've done the further years, where we have quotes for today's date, are we adding increased estimates to these numbers, an inflation number of like two percent or something of the sorts to try to have an accurate? are we adding increased estimates to these numbers, an inflation number of like two percent or something of the sorts to try to have an accurate number for the years?
I ask, I've been asking them. I can't speak for the previous administrator, but I've been asking them to update each project each year with new, with new prices and at the very least, a shot in the dark. I'm not going to make them call a company and bother them for a quote for something that we got last year that we're not gonna actually talk about for five years, but we need to take educated.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is like, so for the FY twenty five numbers, they got ac- accurate up to date numbers for things that you need for next year, but I'm saying where they already have a ballpark for those future numbers for the future years of what they would cost today, do we add on our chart like a two percent inflation number so that we know that, you know, today we're estimating that the duck, dump truck with the plow scheduled for FY twenty seven is probably not gonna be two hundred and forty nine thousand, very accurate number. One fifty eight, it's like they're gonna be a couple of percentage points.
I haven't been doing that, but I do like that idea and will likely implement that because that's a, a good idea.
Well, this gives you a better idea of how much you'll look at in a couple of years from now because I, I totally get not wasting people's time, but if they already have a number, you might as well just add and just caveat at the bottom, so everything's got the same inflation number, which isn't gonna be accurate, but it's gonna give you more of a ballpark. That was that question. And then the police cruiser, is that two police cruisers per cycle at the eighty seven thousand or is that the cost of one cruiser?
Do you wanna?
Probably one.
That's why it's one.
That's now one cruiser?
For the, yeah, the
And that's purchased, not leased, correct?
For the laser type one.
Well, I've seen the ones that are leased and we usually get like two for that cost. Over, or two or three, but it's over a course of like three years, so. Okay, I was checking.
That is the Tahoe.
Yeah, the Tahoe. And then what I, I see for the chief, were you all done? Helen?
I was.
Okay, uh, for the chief, his is seventy six. Uh, so we're doing three years in a row, we're doing cruisers.
The chief's cruiser was pushed off one year with the understanding that he was gonna come back to the finance, not to the capital improvement planning committee next year with a different
Vehicle.
Vehicle opportunity. Like we, there may not be the need to, does the chief likely need a new vehicle in the coming years with the ability to travel with four-wheel drive more than he currently does in the Malibu? Yes. Does it need to be a Chevy Tahoe? No, and we've talked about that. I'm hoping that I'm hoping that next year there will be a lower number on there and it's something we can consider. Obviously, looking at next year, there's going to need to be shuffles around as well because of four hundred and seventy thousand. I can already tell you isn't gonna be feasible.
So, the, what is, what is the, what is the price of an Explorer cruiser right now? Do we know? What did we pay for our last one?
We haven't bought an Explorer in a few years.
Two years.
We bought the Tahoe last.
Oh, we did? Okay, and now, how much, do you remember what that was? Eighty seven?
Less than that, but not ridiculously less than that.
That's with lights and everything else, so that's just the auto.
Everything.
That's everything.
Everything, that's soup to nuts.
Alright, um.
A properly rated police cruiser.
Yep, okay, alright, I'm done.
That's all.
Are you saying, are you saying these uh police cruisers, these Tahos and these Fords are all four-wheel drive?
Yes.
Yeah, the Explorers are all-wheel drive, I think.
All-wheel drive or four-wheel drive?
All-wheel. Okay. The Tahos can probably choose whether they want four high or four low or neutral.
You can on the Explorers as well.
You can?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're not full-time. That helps with gas, so.
So it's four-wheel drive optional?
Let me pull up the, have the quote.
Cool.
Next, a lot of times they got a little knob now, ladies.
Yeah, I didn't think the Explorers had them.
They call, a lot of them have what they call the GOAT.
Well, that's, Ford Bronco's got the GOAT button, right? No, uh.
It gives us dollars in all their stated models.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's a terrain type, not for the Ford Bronco. The GOAT, the GOAT knob.
The voice for the navigational systems.
Great.
Sure.
I'm getting one. I thought they were all-wheel, but maybe not. The Explorers.
A lot of them have been changing over to be able to turn, so that way you're not
Well, you should because it's better on gas.
Yeah, that's part of the reason.
But you can see all these cars, they're pushing all-wheel drive. It's like, it kills your gas mileage by about it was two to three miles per gallon.
Yeah, my old Traverse was all-wheel and now my new one is two-wheel, but I have, uh, yeah, it can turn into four.
Yeah.
So I've only had to do it once, so.
My wife's Bronco is that way. She's got a brand new one. Four-door, four WD, so yeah.
Alright, four-wheel drive, that's good.
Utility vehicle model CK one zero seven zero six.
That's the Blazer.
Yeah.
We was talking about the Explorer.
I don't have a quote for Explorer.
Alright.
Yeah, they've wanted to move to the, to these ones.
Well, because the money, you're paying, spending like within five thousand dollars to buy an Explorer, you could upgrade to the Tahoe.
Yeah.
Which I think the Tahoe, you're gonna get more.
I think they were lasting longer because of the
Well, yeah.
The rust and the rust.
They're lasting longer and less repair.
Yeah.
Right.
Before it's worked.
Found our road dead. That's what this stands for.
Becoming problematic.
I'm encouraged to hear you
Very good, thank you.
Your presentation saying how much you are pushing everybody to search for grants, et cetera. It certainly is reflective of life as it is now for us, but I, I'm really happy to see that uh they are being encouraged to do that because obviously cash-wise, we can, none of these things can, can be absorbed like that by debt, grants.
That being said, when you have like Brigham Street Design S-TIP, State TIP, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Okay, I've just, just not seen it like that.
Sorry.
What's that?
Not that, I'm not repeating that out loud.
What, S, S?
Let's just leave it alone.
The owl is active.
Yeah.
No, STIP funding is, is something on its own, that's the acronym.
Oh, it's something else? It's not the check program?
State TIP.
State something.
Isn't that what you're talking, that's what you wrote here, S-T-I-P?
The State Transportation Improvement Program.
Okay.
Yeah. That's the acronym.
Okay, I've just not, never seen it with the S in front of it, so. I just wanted to make sure you weren't like misspelling strap grant.
Yeah, I know. Oops.
Okay, cool.
Very good, good job. Moving right along.
Do you need anything from us on?
A vote of endorsement?
Yeah, I didn't know if you were done yet.
Either as presented or as amended.
Did we amend anything?
You did not amend it if you were to amend.
Okay.
So, yeah, if we're done with the discussion and questions, there the mo- the motion would be to approve capital improvement plan as, as proposed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the capital improvement uh presentation as, or plan as, as proposed.
Motion made in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried.
Does anyone have any strong or in, or any at all feelings regarding fire truck debt?
We keep pushing it off and
We do keep pushing off, this is at least.
Not gonna get any cheaper and I'm, my biggest concern is I don't want the debt and I know nobody else wants the debt, but how long can we push those things where they're already, one had a rejection and there's two of them that are being problematic? How long can we push it? That's my biggest concern.
Not much longer.
It's, no, it shouldn't have been pushed this long.
Shouldn't have been pushed this long.
And didn't uh the chief tell us that in terms of that very issue, um, us, if we were to go ahead with it, it's like a three-year period to get it built, which means if, if it's eight hundred thousand now, what's it gonna be three years from now?
Why can't we buy a used one?
I have the answer to that because
We have a crappy building that doesn't
Because the building
Oh, because it's, yeah.
Has to be built to that building because.
Why don't we put a pump out in that building?
So we can buy a used one right after we build a new building?
Yeah.
That ain't happening.
It needs to be made to not only length specs, we have height issues as well.
Yeah.
So, bec- and you need to go one direction to enhance, to increase the amount of water you can carry on the truck.
To get in, have you ever been in those buildings with all the fire truck? You can't even
You can't move.
You can't, you have to, so in order to go over to the electrical panel, which sometimes I have to go over to, I have to go and shimmy down and then manage to open the door to come out the front to walk all the way around to go in to get to the electric.
They barely have enough room to get dressed when they have to get
Well, trucks were smaller back then, but now you have more houses, so now you need bigger trucks.
Exactly, and that's
So that's, that's about it.
Yeah, that building was
That building was just a barn. It wasn't built with the, with a fire truck in mind.
Well, let's knock it down and put a metal building in. That'd be a lot cheaper than building a public safety center.
Do we have estimated numbers from Deci- from uh bond council? What that would look like if we?
Not yet. I'm going, I wanted to get the approval from the three committees prior to utilizing time. But we are meeting with bond council in the next couple of weeks.
We, we gotta get on that truck because like you said, I mean, we had talked about that truck a year ago about doing it this year and uh, and it's three years out and it's gonna be a million more by the time you look at it.
When the truck was presented to the capital improvement plan in twenty twenty, it was half a million dollars.
Yeah, and now it's almost a million.
Yeah, now
There will be a million by the time we get around to it, so.
And I'll think the school isn't gonna go get cheaper as we go, so the longer we push it, the more we're gonna hit this wall where it's you know, we get closer to that wall.
Um, town property rate keeps going up, the school's gonna keep getting plenty of money, so.
Well, they've been, yeah, they're working on cutting, trying to cut.
Is this the truck that Chief Hayes um spoke to us like a year ago and said was not gonna pass inspection and was gonna fail inspection?
Yes, sir, same truck.
I think it may, you know, my, my opinion is it makes sense to get um the number breakdown from bond council and treasurer to figure out what that would be over a course of years and you know, very similar to my comment I had when we talked about the public safety buildings. I think we still owe it to the public and to our community to say he, hey, we know there's a problem here. Here's what the solution would be. Here's the options out there. You as community members, residents, registered voters, what say ye, you?
Cause it's, well, cause when it's your house that's on fire, what do you want showing up?
Right. Uh, right, I mean, that's only, and that, and that, that tanker truck is only carrying what, a thousand gallons right now, the small one?
I believe so, but I'd have to
You still gotta run a suction line to a pond somewhere or
Yeah, you gotta
And then you gotta have a pump truck in between that and the next truck, so.
Most of the time I gotta run.
Yeah, so that
Yeah, they can't run lines, it's too far away.
Yeah, no, that's why you gotta, that, that water truck is also the pump truck, I presume.
Yeah.
Cause it's sucking and pumping. Alright.
Yeah.
Alright, we need a truck.
Okay, shall we move on? Nate, alright, if we move on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, to the next item, which is uh basically the uh March fifth twenty twenty four uh election warrant. All basically is needed unless we have questions about it is to a motion to approve and, and sign the warrants for the March fifth twenty twenty four presidential primary.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion is made in second. Is there any discussion on that? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, opposed? Motion carried, okay. Um, next item. The uh contract approvals and executive auth- authorizations. Uh, item number one, FY twenty four firefighter equipment grant. Um, if there's no, again, if there's no discussion, what we're looking for here would be to move to authorize the town administrator to accept the FY twenty four firefighter safety equipment grant on behalf of the town.
So moved.
Second.
Twelve thousand five hundred dollars, yes.
Motion made in second, any discussion?
In, I, I
Yes, go.
I just, uh, and that was just for radios?
Radios.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
It's at the chief's prerogative, but
Motion carried. Uh, the next one would be the uh IT management contract, three-year, and again, unless there's any questions?
I have a question.
I just
Go.
After you.
Sure, thanks. So Nate, um, I didn't read verbatim every piece of this, but looking at the contract, so it looks like they cover most of the general day-to-day operation pieces. They have a flat rate of three hundred and some dollars, whatever, every time you install, if you get new piece of equipment, whatever, and then they have a, and then ninety dollars an hour rate. Can you explain, or can you give us an idea of what that would cover, when we would invoke the and then ninety dollars an hour rate?
New projects. We have not paid ninety dollars an hour for anything that has been within our five-year plan or anything that has been a, an, a day-to-day issue. Like when we call up, say Travis at CM Geeks, we do not pay ninety dollars an hour. That's all within the umbrella. If we were to take on a major tech project and they needed to allocate more than the daily amount of time it takes for Hubbardson, at that point, we would likely have to pay the ninety dollars an hour. We have not paid the ninety dollars an hour this year.
So two follow-ups on that. So in the event of a critical nature like the server crashes, is that covered within the scope of the work?
That's covered within the scope of the work, yeah.
Okay, and then the second question is you alluded to a set number of hours or amount of time that Hubbardson takes. Do we have a, they didn't give us a number. So we're just going arbitrarily based on when they think they're doing more work than they were doing before, they're gonna charge?
We would know.
Okay.
They would one hundred percent tell us if we were going into a outside of scope rate.
Okay, and then
They've treated the town very, very well.
Pertaining to the Google accounts, so we have Google accounts for everyone that's here and some of them was, you know, we change in ads, tracked however we need to. They've referenced the rate of the Google per the, the contracts that are out there. Are we currently on a government contract for uh the Google rates? Are, are we getting the best rate we can get for Google?
I believe so.
Okay.
I'd have to look into that further. None of the rates in the several other packets were they were all equivalent.
Okay.
Several of the other companies that had submitted a proposal wanted us to go to a Microsoft Outlook-based system, but which would have been neither here nor there, but it would have cost right around the same.
And last question, um backup software, do they cover that and pay for it or do we cover and pay for it separately?
It's backed up to the servers that we own outright.
Do we have anything backed up off of the server?
That I don't know.
Okay, if we can
But I will, I will have to speak with them about that.
Okay, cause usually you have like Sofos or um a Cronus or something that you're backing up the server too, because if the server cra- if your computer crashes, you go back to the server. If the server crashes, where do you go?
To the cloud.
Okay, and that's fine.
Usually, that's my thought, is usually it's the cloud.
But where, I don't know that, right? Like is that Cronus, is that Sofos, is that something else?
That'll get you that answer.
Is that part of their package that they have it covered or is that something we have to pay for or currently do pay for separately?
I know we pay a ton of money to pack Laserfish up, so.
I thought we had other questions though.
Does it, I, I, I'm not interested in holding up the contract signing, I just No, 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 I, I think that's probably fine because we still, you know, in the day of cybersecurity, like we need an, an IT provider point blank period. Um, my biggest question is just, these are the random things I learn over time.
I will do
Customs happen.
I will do my research into what we're backing up our servers onto.
Okay, and do we currently have uh multi-factor authentication on all of our accounts?
We are installing it this year. We're aiming to do a transfer to .gov and the MFA transfer this year.
Excellent.
I'm not going to be applying for the cybersecurity grant because Paul noted that it's all very, very easy and we can just do it as part of our, of the scope.
Totally concur.
Alright, my question, you ready? What is the cost of that three-year contract? I, I can't.
Hundred and six thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars over three years. Which would get us about fifteen months of an IT professional in-house.
But then you'd still have to pay for Google, Gmail, all of those pieces, backup.
The, yeah. 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 Yeah, and it's hard off getting help as it is, so.
Mm-hmm.
And you don't wanna know the current going IT rate?
No, probably a hundred and forty thousand. Just die.
Any other comments?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, with, with that in mind, we could have a motion to have, to approve and authorize the town administrator to enter a three-year IT management service contract with CM Geeks.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I would like to note my just, my appreciation for CM Geeks going out and getting liability insurance to maintain us as a client. Thought that was very.
I noticed that.
Nice of them, it took them some time, but all in all, it worked out, we had the time, the con- our current contract doesn't end until the end of the fiscal, so nothing was held up and they received it, and I appreciate that.
We thank them. Um, next item is the town office printer lease, a three-year lease. Uh, Nate, anything you wish to say on this?
Our printer lease was coming up, so I contacted them on the phone and they are part of the state contract, so we could work with Kia Sierra or anybody that is also on the state mid-list. They noted that we were content with our printer and that if they could beat the price, we would consider staying with them. They beat the price by about eighty dollars per month to keep this printer and added the service on the other printer into a lumped price for a hundred and eighty-six dollars for mo- per month. Eighty dollars less than we were paying for just the printer and service over here and we get rid of a twenty dollar, twenty-five dollar bill per month over there.
We still have to pay per print, though.
So it's actually, once I went and looked into it, cheaper to pay per print for what we print
Yeah.
than it would be to buy the cartridges outright. So I, I ended up not making any sort of fuss about that, cause we, we pay a fair rate and for the small amount of things that we do pay, it is a more budget-friendly option to stick with the per copy than it would have been to buy our cartridges outright.
Really?
Yeah.
Including the color?
Yeah, I have.
So between the ink and the cost of the paper, it's cheaper to pay per page?
Well, you're still paying your own paper.
We buy our own paper.
Well, we buy our own paper, so we were paying them to print on our own paper, per page.
You're paying them for the ink every time, yeah?
Yeah.
You get a set number of copies.
Instead of buy, instead of buying a two hundred dollar ton of cartridge?
Not two hundred dollars.
What are they on?
I'd have to look, but I believe they're right around one thousand dollars each.
Oh, for that machine?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it's a commercial machine, basically.
Yeah, we just got one.
Uh, it's not that important, I'm just curious, um.
I don't think it has a price tag on it, no.
So you're not, he's not, so we're not print, uh, printing a thousand dollars worth of paper products
No.
over, how long does that last? Six months, three months?
No, this will last the better part of a year.
Really?
Yeah, and they run out more when we do the heavier printing, but.
So what are we paying for a, a print? Per sheet?
Tenth of a penny.
Tenth of a penny?
For a, what, black and.
Okay.
Five cents per color.
Alright.
Color's not a good deal, so we, we shouldn't be printing.
Everything should be black and white.
Yes.
You can get a small printer for color if you don't already have one.
Yeah.
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 For the few times you do it, you throw it on the color printer.
Yeah, you can get a sixty dollar printer for that.
We have some printers kicking around.
Fire one up. Uh, alright, I'm sure you already worked all our numbers anyways.
That's fine.
Anything else on this?
He didn't answer me, so that's a no.
He, he didn't catch it.
Okay, uh, that being the case, if I could have a motion to approve and authorize the town administrator to enter into a thirty-six month Kia Sierra printer copy lease, given the substantial costs and performance upgrade and s- secure it through negotiations.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, any questions or discussions, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to assessing services, regional resource group, one year.
Uh, so some.
Nate, you wanna address anything on that?
In the contract, in your packet, it is a three-year contract, I have to send it over to, have to change it and send it over to legal, just wanted to get it done, this is a one-year request, next year is our recertification year. If we were to go with anyone else, we would have to pay for our recertification year, I did not get an exact quote on that, but I know it would between, be between thirty and fifty thousand dollars. The way this current company does it is they break up your recertification year over other years when it's not your recertification year, so for us to go with a different option would be considerably more expensive. It also helped that RRG was the only company to put in for the RFP, but we could very well go and work with individual professionals that are not in a company. But for right now, Rob does a good job, especially with us losing our third assessor's clerk in the last year. So this will be the best option for right now, I will continue to look into this both with the finance team and the assessors.
Okay.
So.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Um, so your recertification, you mean with them reevaluation of the town?
Yeah.
They just did it, what, last year or this year? Last year.
That was a.
Last year, cause the taxes just went on, so. So it's done in twenty-two or three?
Taxes. Their last recertification, it's every five years.
Oh, five years.
For, for this specific recertification.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a reevaluation, you're, I think you're thinking of something different.
That's what I'm talking about.
Not a reevaluation.
There is a recertification every five and a revaluation, I believe, every two or every three, yeah.
Three, yeah, okay, so we just did three years.
And now we're gonna do the, the whole town.
Two, a year ago, two years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
It's gotta get certified.
Yeah. So that's a town certification, to be able to do what we do on properties, no?
They're gonna go around and check everything.
That's what it costs, like fifty grand.
Yep.
You should get new growth out of it, so you're okay.
Yeah, we'll get, it, it'll likely come to a additional amount of new growth through this process.
It's a catch-up, it's just saying, hey, we're gonna go back and, you know, anything we missed and, you know, any opportunity to re-grab that value that we may not get, cause Katie's lived in the house forever, but if she was selling the house more regularly, we'd catch up on sale prices.
So, just so you know, I think I saw the state going around and doing something with their land today.
Really?
Hmm, I'm pretty sure that's who that was.
What were they doing?
I think they're like surveying their properties again, whatever they're doing, to give us probably a rate. It goes up on, um, down the street, up my way where all the state land is. New Westminster.
Yeah.
Flat, old white car, flashing light, didn't have a state plate, but, um, maybe they contracted out.
I guess.
They were looking, also was a.
Okay.
Could be.
Just so you know.
Little company, good.
Anything else on this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, if not, I appreciate it.
I wasn't gonna talk to them.
A motion to approve and authorize the town administrator enter a one-year assessing services contract renewal with regional resource group.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, thank you, any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, opposed? Motion carried. On the new business item D, mid-year select board update, and to have it with Nate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I meant to do this last month and other things just prioritized over it. I thought it was appropriate to provide an update on the goals that we set annually in July. Things are going quite well and I will run through the list that is presented in your packet and on the screen right now. Improve the performance of town personnel through training and development, I received a grant with, to work with the Collins Center to create that five-year plan. We are doing the grants one at a time, so this project will start after the completion of the technology tech efficiencies project that you guys have been receiving emails about. I've done some research into different ways that we can increase training for affordable amounts of money and it includes us being able to do some hybrid opportunities now that we do have a better hybrid setup, so I am calling that ongoing. Perform a comprehensive compensation survey, that is complete, we, I presented the compensation analysis a few weeks ago. Although we will not likely be able to implement much of it, it is good to have, question?
Yes, um, does that compensation, what, where, where is it?
The second one?
Second.
The second, perform comprehensive compensation survey, does that survey, do you survey the towns around?
I did.
When you do that, how, and how do we compare?
I presented on it two meetings ago.
You did?
Yeah.
Can you refresh my memory, please?
Bad, we, we.
So were that bad?
No, we're not.
We're not competitive.
We're not competitive.
We're not awful, but we're not.
We're not where we should be.
Yeah.
Okay, and my next question is.
I'll resend it to you again.
Um, is there anything in that, uh, grant that does anything for employee retention?
That is the goal.
Part of the compensation?
Yeah.
Cause it's all in one.
That's what we're aiming for.
Okay, thank you.
It's tighter.
Very good.
Make it easier for them to stay with us.
Yep.
It's definitely appealing at the time.
That is the goal.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the compensation plan is also posted to the town website, I can resend it to you if you'd like. But long and short, we're, we are competitive with the lower numbers.
We're not like super off, but we're not.
Yeah, but we don't have seven thousand people going in town either.
Right, so when you say, you know, where we should be.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, are we where we should be considering.
It's, it's within. Within our grasp, yeah, of where we should be.
Considering, you know, our environment.
Yeah. Can only afford what?
And the goals that we're trying to achieve, they will be going up in their own too, you know, in the sense of.
Yeah, but I mean, we only have forty-five hundred people in town, whatever it is, you can only afford to pay.
On the town. Yeah.
And the benchmark communities also have a similar, um, a population to the town of Hubbardston.
Really?
Yep.
What were the other comparison, what were the other, um, factors that they used to determine which communities were comparable, other than population?
Yeah, thank you.
I. They, w- was, there was no they.
Oh, I'm sorry, my bad, so when you did that?
Yeah.
The analysis, did you use any other factors, you just went based on population and?
Budget, I did, budget under, under twelve million dollars, anywhere between forty-five, uh, four thousand people and seventy-five hundred people.
What about location? Was it just Worcester?
I did most of them in Worcester County, but took a couple of outliers that met the qualifications from a little bit further away. Kept away from incredibly western Mass, Franklin County towns and towns on the Cape.
And, and another thing in that parameter should be, um, commercial real estate should be involved in it also, is it?
And it was, yes, I, I sent out a whole sheet on that, I can provide you with every.
It was? I, I don't need everything, I just need to hear it from you.
Yeah, so it was. DLS provides us with a database where you can go on and set specific parameters
Okay. Okay.
and do it based on the parameters you set and it'll pop you with whatever towns come for that setting.
Alright. Come close to it.
That's where I got it, and then I added a couple that I knew would skew the data both ways. One more west that I knew would skew it down and Harvard, that I knew would skew it up, so.
Yeah, um, on that database, do they, do you have a, um, a, a commercial real estate tax and value also?
Yep.
Really, so you're punching that number, what we, they pay?
Yep. A no, a majority of the communities don't have a split rate.
Really?
Yeah. There, a split rate is few and far between in Massachusetts.
For commercial?
Yep.
Really? Okay, just the cities then, maybe just the cities have a split rate?
Yeah, there's a small, I don't know about that.
Even most of them gotten away from it over time.
Really, just a single flat rate?
It's, it's not beneficial to keep the business in town.
Yes.
They, they flee.
Really?
They don't know.
Well, I've noticed Gardners doing pretty good lately with bringing in companies. Have they changed something up there?
Yeah.
Got four more coming in.
I know.
A hundred and ten of three fifty-one, have some more than I thought, but.
Okay. Yeah, they got a punch in places coming here, I don't know if they're making deals or what, but they're doing something right.
Are they though?
Yeah, isn't there like a firehouse sub's going in up there?
Uh, there's a, yeah.
A Jersey Mike's.
Jersey Mike's.
What's the?
They're doing Chipotle.
Aldi's, Aldi's, yeah.
Aldi's Chipolis coming?
Yeah, Five Below.
So you can go somewhere over ninety-nine?
They just had a hot place come in.
Alright, excellent.
Aldi supermarket.
Yep.
Yeah.
The Five Below.
Five Below, yeah, that's my kinda store.
I had someone tell me that the.
You got some rings.
Don't we have, don't we have a Five Below called Dollar Tree?
We have multiple Dollar Trees, the Dollar General, I.
Yep.
Alright, moving right on.
Alright, so that's complete. Identify opportunities to make municipal services more efficient and cost-effective, we are working with the Collins Center on that, they are coming here February twenty-eighth to speak with those interested in speaking with them about ways to use techno- technology and standard operating procedures to create efficiency. One of my main goals here is to ensure that if the town is going to keep having this turnover every one, two, three, five years, that new people coming in do not have to deal with the same problems that their predecessor did. The amount of people that tried to pull the wool over my eyes with different issues.
Yeah.
So a CRM, a resource, a constituent management database is something that I'd like to see come of this. A putting more of our licensure on to the software that we have over in building is something I'd like to see come of this, I have made sure to let absolutely everyone on staff know that this, this is not about getting rid of or shrinking positions, this is about creating efficiencies so that we can do more with less. Effort, our staff is valued and we can't keep the doors open without them, but if we can do, Hubbardston already punches above its weight class in many, many ways. If we can increase our efficiencies because of techno- technology that's already out there, I wanna do it. Implement an overhaul to the capital improvement planning process, that I'm calling complete-ish, because the few things that I tried to accomplish with the capital improvement plan, planning process this year worked in in theory that we did them, but they did not get the number of people participating that I would have liked, so I think that updating that will be a goal of mine in the upcoming year as well. Create a communications plan to increase voter turnout and engagement. I am currently working on a five-year community engagement strategy and plan that should be out next month. I am going to be releasing a public input survey this week, maybe latest next week, I have all of my questions done. I just need to have a couple of people look at it to make sure that all the questions line up the way that I think they do. And then I will be sending it out for people to take. Implement targeted measures to eliminate budget deficit, this was a strategic long-term goal. And I'm working with the structural deficit working group to work on this. This is a very difficult problem to solve, we are not alone in dealing with this, however, as a town. However, as a town administrator and I'm sure as a select board, I would not want to bring forward something like an override without it being partnered with some sort of additional revenue opportunity. Because a, an override is not a fix-all, which some other communities in the region have tried to make it. You can land right back in the same problem as you were in the year before, literally one year later. So we're going to continue looking into ways to increase revenue or create efficiencies that will create more opportunity. So, yeah, that's hard.
Yeah.
Study the feasibility of establishing OPEB trusts and retiree healthcare. I've placed that goal on hold just due to the other financial matters that we're dealing with right now. It would be a multi, like upwards of four or five million dollar project to take on and it is something that the town of Hubbardston does eventually need to take on, whether it be at whether it be their choice or they are forced to. But that is not something that I believe there is the bandwidth financially to even begin considering right now. I will be releasing a a report on that before the end of the year, but the numbers aren't pretty.
And that includes using strategies like other communities have started, which is employee contributions to OPEB?
Yeah.
Okay.
The gentleman from the company, Parker, didn't really want to work with us because he had noted the financial difficulties of the town.
That's pretty bad, but they're like, yeah, you don't have enough money for this.
Yeah, strategize funding streams for public safety facility, capital projects. The, we're working with the public safety building committee. We are meeting, I believe, on Thursday. Just recently, the chair and vice chair of the committee and myself went to sixty Gardner Road to view the Jansons parcel again, so we will see how that goes. The committee is exploring anything. Going to a building we had never seen before with Mike Stoll was a interesting time.
I can probably imagine.
He brought a heat gun to to check the.
Those things always just throw that away.
Heat loss.
The foundation, he was, he was okay with the, with what was going on.
Alright.
Increase resident participation in local government. We are aiming to do it, we are creating outreach programs, understanding participation, participation barriers and overall communicating with the community more than in the past. Unfortunately, the citizens academy didn't get the interest that we were hoping and we'll try something else.
Plus we also have vacancies on the.
Throw out. It's just, it's just a total lack of, people don't want to be bothered, they want to pay their taxes and do their own thing.
Yep, so we'll try, I think we're going to be video recording sort of a version of it and going from there. And review site plan approval process. I've been working on that with the planning board and land use clerk. We're going to be putting in for a D L T A grant and moving forward on that to increase, to lessen the red tape for appropriate businesses and opportunities to come. I like to highlight the word appropriate because that's what, but that's it and I will take questions. I think we're making progress towards finishing a majority all of the immediate goals and a majority of the strategic long-term goals by the end of the fiscal, so we can set new ones.
Sounds good. Any questions or from anybody? There's no formal action necessary here, so we'll move on then, thank you. The town report selections to review and vote on the dedication, cover photo and the select board message for annual report, would you like to address that?
Well, tho- those are llamas.
Those are not, those are not llamas.
Those are active.
Those are, oh, there is one llama in that, the one in the center, you can tell by the ears, that's a llama.
The big one, the big one?
Yeah, the big one, that's a llama.
That must be male.
Spit face.
Yeah, well, it's a, it's a llama, the rest are alpacas.
Oh, okay.
The other white one on the side might be.
Yeah, that's big like that.
But they, they mostly have.
Is that from our group down here in town?
Yeah, that's from Plainfield.
Yeah, it's very particular where it was.
That's.
I hope all these pictures are from town, aren't they?
They are.
Yeah, we hope. Kind of pointless if it's not.
This is Greenfield.
Yeah.
I just didn't recognize, I didn't recognize where it is though, as far as where it's taken.
It's gotta be in the back.
Their property.
The backyard, yeah, I didn't know they had water.
This is my favorite.
That's my favorite too.
And not because it's like the best location, but the picture is just breathtaking.
I don't find it favorite. Yeah.
Yeah, is that this year?
Yep.
Really, looks okay.
I'd have to tell you afterwards because I'd have to look at the email.
I like it.
Yeah, that's my favorite.
I do.
But it's just eye-catching and you know.
It's just the clouds and the sun, you know, you see that split.
Just the water and how the snow is glistening.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I'm going to do my best to implement all of these into the report in some way, even if it's just a
Somewhere.
Yeah.
hey, look at these two pages of photos.
Yeah, no, they, they are good pictures of this.
Yes.
Where are they all? I, I only have like two.
The run.
No, they're all in there.
Oh, it is, yeah, alright, this, this.
Yeah, you gotta slide over. Alright, scroll to next. That was cute, still seeing the ponies. That's nice too.
And then we did receive much more than six, these six were picked by Bobby, Tony and Mary. Cause I can barely see colors.
Ooh, I like.
That's my second, that's my second favorite.
I like that one too, I really like that one.
I agree, I feel like it's welcome to Hubbardston.
Yeah. Yeah, that's up on Malone and Malchash.
Yeah, I thought this was a pretty, that's a nice shot.
Yeah.
Pretty.
And then sticking with that.
Cannon.
Yeah.
Nice pictures though. Nice, nice.
Yeah, everyone has nice pictures, these ones here.
Nice, nice.
See those bluebird, oh, those bluebirds on the wheel, yep.
Oh, yeah, there are little birds, oh.
Bluebirds.
So that makes it way cooler.
My vote's for the water one.
Yeah, my wa- the water one's my favorite, that one on Malone is the second favorite.
Is that all of them?
Yeah, you have six choices today.
Yeah, no, I like that, that's just, it's almost like fake looking, you know what I mean?
It is.
It's, yeah, such small town.
It's got that, it's got that, you know, the water and the bridge look kind of fake, but they're not.
So this is everyone's choice?
No, I vote for the tree.
The tree, okay.
That's my second favorite.
It's definitely a toss-up between that.
So three of you are far from now.
The tree is comforting, inviting.
I would, I would do the. Yeah.
Yep.
This is cold, dang, dark, dreary.
But it's mystical, like it's.
Different time of the year too.
Yeah.
It's, no, that's a, that's.
They're all gonna be in there, right?
We don't live in the Shire with the hobbitses, we live in the real town.
This is just for the cover, right?
Yeah.
The cover we're talking about, right?
Well, and that one's the hobbitses.
That's a nice sunny sun going down, beautiful tree, nice unpaved road showing all the hard work we're doing there.
Out there, go nowhere to go.
Beautifully paved road, you know, goes off to infinity, it's got the infinity to it, you know.
It shows off. Shows why we're in poor financial situation, cause it's no commercial.
You're in the middle of nowhere, you know, you're in a beautiful rural town.
We're just trying to agree on the cover photo, correct?
From everything there is.
Right?
Yeah, we're just trying to agree on one, he's gonna put them all in.
Yeah, it's all good.
He's gonna work his magic and get them all in there.
Yeah.
Look, there's even a sign with a tractor on it, says welcome to Hubbardston.
It's us.
On that picture?
Yeah, on the hay bale, right? Is that a hay bale?
You got good, you got good eyes, sir.
With the Sasquatch in the back field by the tree line.
Yeah.
Yeah, that says welcome to Hubbardston.
Wow, didn't even.
You need a guy out there with a gun hunting something though, you gotta, should be a man. So what's?
Do you have a motion on this?
What's our choice, yeah.
No.
Bridge, water and bridge.
Water.
Is number one.
The water, the water and the bridge.
They're all gonna be in there.
Okay.
That's just the cover.
I think they're all beautiful pictures, we should thank everyone for them.
Yeah. It's clo- it's close between that one and the water one though.
Can we also put those on our website, use them as part of our?
Oh, you're gonna get so sick of seeing these, half, half of the reason I did this was to give myself some more photos to put in stuff.
No, no, how can you, when they're nice pictures, you don't get sick of them.
Oh, no.
But even E D C might want to consider a couple of these, something.
Yep. We did put verbiage in there, states, the town can use them without compensation.
You'd consider a lot of them.
Excellent.
There is one thing we need to take action on here.
Dedication?
Yeah, to, to, uh, the recommendation to, for posthumously for Dennis O'Donnell.
Mm-hmm.
For his contributions of many years of service to Hubbardston. So, um, if there's no objection, could we have a motion to dedicate the twenty twenty-three annual town report posthumously to Dennis O'Donnell?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made on the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, yeah.
Yes, opposed? Motion carried. Do you, nothing else you need for, on this one, right?
None on that one, yes, so I showed you guys what we'll put, I'll hand that over to Tony by the end of the month when.
Okay. And, uh, the other thing was the select board message.
Hold up, town report.
Okay.
Alrights. Put a lot of color in it, we printing it color?
No, I, I made sure that when we invert the colors, it prints in black and white just fine.
Okay. Okay, it works, it works fine, okay. Yeah, cause I don't ever remember seeing one in color.
Colorful guy.
I, I get that, it looks great here, but will it translate?
No, just don't print them.
No, we're not trying to.
You know, lock out that color button.
We print these out of house too.
Yeah, we only print the handful, right?
Make sure we get you all in the pictures. You, Cody?
Oh, look at that, I missed that picture. Big wig glasses are falling off right now.
Nice.
That's not his Hubbardston sweatshirt though, I don't think.
No, that's, that's Chiefs.
That was before Hubbardston.
Yeah, that's Chiefs.
He does wear the Hubbardston sweatshirt everywhere, so.
Doesn't he have a little patch on it, isn't there a little round patch on there?
Well, it's, you know, it just says Hubbard, yeah, I think it does, it says Hubbardston on it, but.
Yeah, I thought the town seal was on his, had a town seal patch.
Yeah, now you just need an embroidered, you know, a job description.
Well, put his name on it, put his name overs.
Well, eventually his sister will inherit it, so it'll look weird when Noel wore that hoodie shirt.
Well, right, it's only a matter of time before.
Yeah.
Are we okay with the message and everything else?
Yes.
Yes, would you like a motion for that, do you?
Yeah, I don't think we need one, right?
No, good.
Okay.
No, that's formal.
Okay, so why don't we move on if, let's. Under, anything under all business? Nothing? No, we have, okay, we'll go to the town administrator's report.
Alright, it is almost eight thirty and I've talked a lot this evening, so we will do this, I made bullet points. You can, you can look at the, at the beautiful version on the town website. We had a successful biannual boarding committee chair meeting to improve collaboration, thank you to those who attended. The structural deficit working group met and analyzed finances, revenue growth ideas and talked about what ways we could move forward into the upcoming annual town meeting season. I already talked about how the public safety building committee toured the site at sixty Gardner Road. We will be talking about that and other opportunities on Thursday. Uh, I and some other staff members attended a zoning bylaw amendments course so that we can know what to do in the future. I found it quite interesting and regarding the different ways that you can write those up. It was mostly for the town clerk and the planner, but we don't have one of those, so everyone should learn. There's been good progress made with the planning board on the master plan and permitting policies. The, you should be receiving certain chapters of the master plan in the coming days. If you have not already, you know, Tricia is on vacation this week, so she may not do that until she gets back. The departments have submitted at my request a three percent budget cut scenario for F Y twenty-five based on cutting their F Y twenty-four numbers. A good amount of those cuts are going to be necessary and I have balanced the budget with the school at a eight percent increase. So, much higher than that, it will be difficult, but we will be speaking about that in much greater detail in two meetings.
Still, eight percent's a lot, you know what I mean, it really is.
That's if they cut one point five million from what they are currently having.
Million, correct.
Yeah.
How about cut some positions?
Cutting to that high from positions is still very difficult too.
Yeah, I know.
Cause they have to.
They hired a, the COVID positions, that's what I'm talking about.
One of the things they said in one of their meetings was if they cut positions, they're still on the hook for paying unemployment.
Unemployment.
So it doesn't really save as much money as you think it's going to.
It's usually a two-for-one, right? So for, if you need to save fifty thousand and the body is fifty thousand, you're cutting two bodies cause you're still putting fifty thousand in your budget on the unemployment line. That's why, you know, when you get down to cutting staff even for general budget, you're depleting way more than you think you are. You're not just cutting, you know, one person, you're cutting two to save for one.
This is crazy.
I know.
I mean, they stay high at a lot of positions there during COVID, cause they had free money there, nothing's free, so.
Developing the twenty twenty-five to twenty-nine communications and engagement plan as I spoke about. Pursuing grants for economic development, technology, public safety and a few other things. We will be hosting my fourth coffee and commu- community conversations. Not next Tuesday, but the following Tuesday, the last Tuesday of the month. There will be two more of those after this one, way before I transition to a more seasonal approach to meeting members of the community at community events.
It is ne- I, I think you're mistaken, it is next Tuesday, there's only twenty-nine days in the month.
Is it next Tuesday?
Yeah, yeah, next Tuesday.
We're on the twentieth right now, so.
So twenty, twenty-seven.
What's your turnout usually like for those, Nate?
Great.
What, what do you ask?
How many humans do you have other than yourself and staff?
And the employees, yeah.
Hey, and Jeff and his friends, we have everyone.
We had a regular group now, we had a regular group, yeah.
What time, what time is it in the morning? It's like eight-thirty in the morning.
And we've had people.
So you bring your friends?
Well, I go, people, we have breakfast with, you know, all the time, but, uh, I can reach.
What is it?
Eight-thirty in the morning.
If, to be, let, seriously though, people have come in.
Which day, March what?
Okay.
People have come in and asked when is the next one and they've come in purposely to see Nate, so.
Next Tuesday? Breakfast?
Okay.
This is Tyler.
Just, just checking.
How good is it?
She came.
This is Tyler?
Yeah.
Oh, Lois?
Yes.
Okay.
She came.
Lois.
Ed came. Couple of.
There's no light at the door then.
No.
I was just, I was just asking, oh, good, thank you.
People, people definitely.
It's okay.
They're not running out of eggs and bacon yet.
We go get breakfast, Wanda will chat with you, everybody will chat with you, it's good stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
There was a major issue of our two thousand fourteen plow truck down at the D P W. Travis was able to fix it within budget, but it costs almost thirty thousand dollars to fix.
Was that?
Cause it needed a new engine.
It did?
Yeah, and we're gonna get five more years.
Six point seven liter Power Stroh, or seven point three, which one was it?
I don't know.
Light it on fire.
One of them they had trouble with.
He'll be here in two, in two weeks.
Just curious, I thought it was a fuel pump originally.[1720.01] Just curious. I thought it was a fuel pump originally.
And what year was it?
Twenty fourteen.
The red dump truck, the four fifty?
Light it on fire.
I'm not a car guy, which you can probably tell. There were problems in the system because of some sort of metal chipping.
So what happened is usually what's had happened in a lot, and it just happened in my diesel, which was a nineteen, you have a fuel injector pump that pumps the diesel fuel to all your fuel injectors. And internally, they start to come apart. The problem is if your oil filter doesn't catch all the metal parts, it's going through all your bearings in your engine, destroying it.
Yep.
Wow.
Chaching.
Yeah, it happens so frequently that they make a disaster kit for just this.
Wow.
There's something wrong.
Ah, no recalls. We're just gonna, don't worry, we'll sell you this to fix it after it blows up.
Sandovery was on Hubbardston Headlines, my short YouTube and community access show, talking about her twenty-plus years of experience in volunteerism on parks, commissions, the CPA, among other things. It was a great ten, fifteen minute chat. Check it out. I interviewed with Gardener Magazine, as I do about every two months, on everything happening in Hubbardston. It plays on WGAW on Saturdays. And the calendar for the upcoming annual town meeting being held in June is within the town administrator's report. I'll open that up right now. So this. Warrant opens at our March eighteenth meeting, closes on April first. A public hearing on the budget and ATM articles on April fifteenth. A unannounced-to-be-determined senior center public forum. A edition of Hubbardston Headlines focused solely on the annual town meetings. A article review document released. I've already started working with the moderator, who is also going to be recording a sh- a show or a section of a show on your, attending your first town meeting, which we will keep and replay until such time as Renee is no longer the moderator. Article review document in May, the warrant signed May sixth. Voter registration deadline, May fifteenth. Final date of post, May twenty-first. Our rave community communications alert one week before, and the annual town meeting on June fourth, twenty twenty-four. I am not getting married again this year, so I'll be there with no problems.
Not really.
No.
It was the second Tuesday.
So can we go back to this truck? I just wanna make sure I heard this correctly. We put a thirty thousand dollar motor in a ten-year-old truck?
It would have cost a lot more than that to buy a new truck.
What's the warranty on the motor?
Five years.
Okay.
What's the value of the truck usually?
That I would have to get you an answer to.
What, what was the?
So it's a ten-year-old truck?
What was the truck, what kind of truck?
The motor's worth more than the truck is right now, so.
Yeah, but he's talking about like replacement new value.
Yeah.
What, what type of truck was it?
It's a, it's a, it's, it's a four fifty Ford with a small, a small red dump truck that probably plows your neighborhood, it plows my neighborhood.
Oh.
Um, you know, when they're working on the side of the road, whatever they're doing, that's the truck they're using. That's the only truck they have to use.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yep. And to be honest and to stick up for Travis here, we were in it for eighteen before we knew the, the motor, the engine had blown.
How's the body on the truck?
Fine.
Oh, so you'll get more light out of it. You've already paid for the most expensive parts.
Yeah. I, I bet they can get another ten out of it if they want to. So, not with a new engine. Next thing, the train will go, so.
Travis was very adamant that I say five.
Five out of the new engine?
Yeah.
Four, you, you, oh, those are auction, yeah. Um, yeah. At least one of the basics.
But you said it's warranted for five.
The old one, the new one won't be, right?
I believe it is.
Five years?
Yeah.
They make them last more than five just so they don't have to replace it. New engine is on dump.
Okay, I'm checking to make sure.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking.
What are you checking? To make sure my date of for town meeting is correct.
Oh.
Annual town meeting, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, um, oh, wait, that's election. Hold on, no, 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 no. Annual town meet, no, the seventh. You're, you're probably right. Or is that the seventh? Would that be the second? Uh, the first, right? First Tuesday, second Tuesday. What's the bylaws that? I know it's very specific.
Yeah, I changed my truck's, my four years old.
The fourth is the, t- Tuesday.
Changed my fuel filter was full of that, so we'll get rid of it.
Yeah, I know, but is it the first Tuesday or the second Tuesday?
Yeah, it's the first one.
It's the first one?
Are you talking about the calendar year?
Yeah, no, I'm, no, I'm talking about what our bylaws says for our town meeting.
Yeah. Oh, oh, I, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about.
That good truck must be on the warranty status.
Yeah, I think it had a year left, but I got nervous.
I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head.
Yeah, I thought it was the second one.
You know, you know what the root cause is? It's called low sulfur diesel fuel.
The part of the annual town meeting for the conduct of business matters shall be held seven thirty P M.
Cause it loses, when you take that sulfur out of the fuel, it loses its fluidity.
On the Monday of the week preceding the annual town election or such other day prior to the end of the fiscal year designated by the select board, the part of the annual town meeting for the election of town officers and the determination of such matters as laws that are required to be determined by ballot shall be held on the second Tuesday of June each year, so.
Second Tuesday.
The election.
Yeah.
Oh, that's the election.
Yeah, so that would be the eleventh.
Okay. Okay, okay.
That would be the eleventh.
So like we have the election, that's probably what I'm thinking.
Yeah, the eleventh and the fourth.
Okay. Alright, so the town meeting's the first Tuesday and the town election's the second Tuesday. Okay, gotcha. We're good now.
Alright, it might even be on the third. I'll have to check.
Hey, the what?
It might even be on the third of June, but it's definitely that first week.
Okay, okay.
That is all I have.
Okay, we're good.
Okay, alright.
I, I guess there's one follow-up. So with regards, we have the, uh, town clerk slash assessors clerk position now posted. How are we doing with that? Are we getting any hits?
Nope.
Can you please find another Joyce Green?
No, we are getting.
Or the original?
Yeah, well, no, cause she's gonna retire. We need a, we need a new version to point out, you know?
So. So, we are getting a lot of what I'm going to call hits. They are people seeing the word clerk and applying based off of that.
Tire fakers.
Not that these individuals have zero experience, but they do not have the municipal experience I believe it requires to suc- be successful at this role. I will keep it open probably another two weeks before reevaluating what is really going on.
Do you have a plan in the meantime for coverage in the event that Candace goes the day after the election and the home of the town clerk's office is vacant?
Please cover.
Case is covered. We were talking about today.
Two super trying to have today. I would, I would have to cover myself for a little while, but we, we're gonna figure it out very, very quickly.
You will cover.
Do you have, we maybe approach our former clerk to see if she would, she would fill in?
She, she, she wouldn't do it. She didn't wanna, I, I don't.
Yeah, to twist her.
I respectfully ask that we don't discuss that on.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, right.
But.
But you're looking at options for potential part-time or temporary coverage of the time being, is what we're trying to find the answer.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Alright.
Okay.
That was my only question.
There are at least two or three applicants that I would give an interview to in, in there.
Alright.
Yeah.
How many applicants have we got?
Twenty.
Really?
Yeah, but it's a, a, a majority are off of indeed, and the word clerk plays differently to different people.
It's all like.
Yeah. So it zooms in on that clerk word and then it.
Yeah, like.
Spits your resumes.
Alright, uh, then, um, moving on. We don't have any policies to review, correct?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, Matt is not reasonably anticipated by the chair. Does anyone have anything that needs to come up at this time? Alright. Public press questions? So, we have a motion to adjourn, please.
Some, second.
Motion made and second to adjourn. No discussion. Meeting adjourned.